Go ahead and call the meeting order at 7:00 PM. I don't believe we had any amendments to the agenda, so. Do we have motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented by staff.
All right, second.
Second.
Vote by roll call.
Counselor Caceres?
Aye.
Counselor Ecclestone?
Aye.
Counselor Lee?
Aye.
Counselor Seeny?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Moving on, public comment. I don't see anybody in the attendees.
No.
So nothing for public comment, nothing for visitors consent agenda. Did everybody get a chance to read through it? Anybody have any issues with it? We get a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a second?
A second.
Vote by roll call.
Counselor Caceres?
Aye.
Counselor Ecclestone? Counselor Lee?
Aye.
Counselor Seeny?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
I was not present, so I will abstain.
Motion passes.
So, no publicans, no old business, new business. First, we have termination agreement, DEQ mutual agreement in order, our MAO with DEQ. Go ahead, Ron.
I didn't do a written staff report because this is pretty straightforward. As council recalls, we were required to sign a MAO with DEQ related to the operation of our sewer treatment facility. They were going to go through the process of issuing a new NP DES discharge permit, which is our environmental discharge permit. While we worked on a capital facilities plan, they did issue the permit after a public comment period was opened up last month. I don't believe there was any comments. And because they issued the permit, now the permit becomes the authority which we operate under. So there's really no need for the MAO any longer. And so this is basically just an order dissolving that agreement. And I just, I mean, I just wanted to get it in front of council so you knew that we were terminating it and really the motion that I would be asking for here is simply authorize city administrator to sign the termination agreement for the MAO with DEQ.
But you got any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to authorize the city administrator to sign termination of agreement with the Department of environmental quality regarding the mutual agreement in order as presented by staff.
We have a second?
Second.
Vote by roll call.
Counselor Caceres?
Aye.
Counselor Ecclestone?
Aye.
Counselor Lee?
Aye.
Counselor Seeny?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Hey, real quick, I think I may be having a computer glitch or I don't know, but Doug, is your name, my name on your screen?
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
It is.
What are you, what are you doing there, buddy?
Well, you forwarded the link, you forwarded the link to me. I wasn't on the link for the meeting.
Yeah, no, it's all good. I get it. I'd want to be me too if I wasn't me.
This is what you would look like with glasses.
Nah, I'm still good looking. We're good.
Stop and dangle.
That's funny.
Moving on, we have the first reading of ordinance number 704, an ordinance adopting City of Amsoil Public Works Design and Construction Standards and repealing ordinance number 528.
Yeah, and I'll just give a quick, there's a staff report in your pack, but I'll give a quick overview. The last time we updated the Public Works Design Standards was 2004. The update was a minor update. Those standards had been in place previous to that. And they're old standards and we really haven't operated under them, at least for the last 10 years. We've been basically asking developers to kind of agree to operate under the City of Salem standards, which is not really the best way to do business, but we hadn't had the ability to upgrade these standards. This was one of our council project goals to get these updated for a long time, and so we were finally able to catch up and get that done this, this year. There will be probably ongoing minor edits to the standards as time goes on. Things like ADA slopes change frequently. And what we memorialized in the ordinance and the subsequent resolution and the standards themselves is that some of these minor alterations can be made under the authority of the city administrator, so we don't necessarily have to come back with an entire revision document every time. But we'll try to bring those back, at least under a consent item or something to council in the future. But basically, these just determine things like how thick the asphalt needs to be on a new road. You know, the width of the sidewalk, that, those kinds of things. If you go by our old standards, we would be completely out of compliance with the American Disability Act, which are federal standards that we have to meet among several other things, and that's why we haven't used them. So far, nobody's challenged. You know, the city's use of another city's standards, they've pretty much just agreed with it because it's kind of commonplace in development. But we did want to get them updated, and I feel good about getting this project forward to you tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Did have a question, Ron. I didn't see it in the materials and maybe I was blind because I kind of hastily went through it online. Does it maintain our, I guess, footage that we have currently for streets? Since, you know, I'll be honest, when I was a younger counselor, new to this body, I was very critical of, you know, our streets being the width that they are. And now, having been a little bit more seasoned, didn't actually been a part of a couple of fire incidents, I now appreciate, understand the importance of, from a public safety perspective, our, you know, street standards. So I just want to make sure that that's retained and.
It is, and those width standards memorialized in our development code.
Right, I knew that.
Yeah, and so, yeah, we wouldn't change those things, but slopes of the aprons or how the aprons on the approaches come in, you know, thickness of the sidewalks, those, those types of things, storm drain standards. It's really the engineer, what, it's what the engineer relies on to be able to hold a developer to some sort of standard construction material that will later take over. With this, the other thing that we'll be able to do and in the subsequent resolution, we do do that, is we change our fee schedule. One of the things that I've said to council for many years is we've been subsidizing development. And I know in our vision plan and in our recent ordinance updates, that was one of the things that we really were working on changing because the, really, the community at large should not do that. And, and so now we moved to what's an industry standard, which is a 5% public works, engineering and inspection and review fee. And so what that does, new developer comes in and they're going to put in a grid of streets. There's a lot of work that city staff, the engineer take on from inspections to meetings to design standards and communicating that back and forth. And before, we had the set fee, which was memorialized in our type B permits. And it was really 1% to 2% depending on where you fell in that range. And, and so really, by and large, with a lot of our larger developments, we rarely were able to cover our costs. And with the new standards and the, the next resolution, we'll be setting that at 5% of the cost. So as the cost of the development or the size of the development increases, the fee increases with that. And that'll allow us to, to cover those costs. And then what we'll be coming back to you at the next meeting with will be an updated to our type A permit. So type B permits are public works infrastructure. So that's things like, the standards cover things like streets, sidewalks, sewer systems, pipes, water system, pipes, those types of things. And, and so anytime somebody's installing that, we have to make sure that it meets, it fits with the rest of our system. And so the type A permit then will come forward with some revisions. I gave you that example about a local commercial project that we did that we really didn't recoup any return. We didn't recoup any of our costs on because our type A permit doesn't really have a fee assigned to it. And so what we'll be doing is we'll break it out into those resident, residential projects like decks and driveways and you know, sheds and fences that will be no cost for us to go out and administer. And then there will be other things that will be more developer-driven where we're applying the development code standards that will have some sort of a fee schedule to it. So we're working on that right now. But all in all, you know, we're following the map that we outlined, which was get the codes updated and then move towards the administrative documents that support all that.
Ron?
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the first reading by title only of ordinance number 704, adopting City of Amsoil Public Works Design and Construction Standards and repealing ordinance number 528 as presented by staff.
Second.
Vote by roll call.
Counselor Caceres?
Aye.
Counselor Ecclestone?
Aye.
Counselor Lee?
Aye.
Counselor Seeny?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And since that was unanimous, we can go ahead and do the second reading if you want.
Do we need a motion to adopt then? Okay. All right, I move to adopt.
No.
I move to adopt ordinance number 704, adopting City of Amsoil Public Works Design and Construction Standards and repealing ordinance number 528 as presented by staff.
Do we have a second?
Second that.
Vote by roll call.
Counselor Caceres?
Aye.
Counselor Ecclestone?
Aye.
Counselor Lee?
Aye.
Counselor Seeny?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
All right. So we got resolution number 1621, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to administer the Public Works Design and Construction Standards and standards and adopting a fee.
I feel like we've kind of already covered this in the previous staff report, so it's just adopting the fee by resolution.
Anybody have any questions? Pretty straightforward stuff. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 1621 as presented by staff.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Vote by roll call.
Counselor Caceres?
Aye.
Counselor Ecclestone?
Aye.
Counselor Lee?
Aye.
Counselor Seeny?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we've got your report, Ron.
Well, this is my off-meeting report. I gave a pretty, I think, extensive report the last time. So I don't really have anything to update the council on, with the exception of just a little preview of, I, I think we're getting really close to coming to council with some decision points related to our sewer capital facilities plan. I want to make sure that we have kind of covered every, you know, uncovered every stone, so to speak, so that we can adequately make sure that you have all the information that you need. Just because it's such a huge, it's such a huge endeavor for us as a community. And there are options, they all have pros and cons. I will tell you that now that they're doing a little deeper dive, the, the, the cost of, of all the options have increased dramatically. Not that that's really a surprise in today's environment, but at the same time, you know, when you start looking at it, it's, it's, it's even, you know, a little harder pill to swallow. But along with that, we are bringing forward some estimated costs of monthly utility rate payers to all of these options. And, and, and again, they're not, they're not inexpensive costs. And right now, they're assuming that the city won't receive any grants related to construction. And I don't believe that that will be the case. I believe that we'll be able to make some very strong arguments for grants. So, so we're in the process of that. Simultaneously, we've got a lot of public works infrastructure things going on. We have completed the water rights study area. And we've also completed the hydro well siting analysis. So this is a geological kind of look of the area and, you know, where the basalt deposits are and where we think is the best locations for us to sink a new production well, along with some costs related to that. Now, council, I've been working with Business Oregon, who now is in charge of administering our $2.5 million grant. And they're also the agency that finances these public works projects. So it probably is a great fit to administer those funds, some of these state grants. And so we'll be working with them. We're going back and forth with project information with them right now to make sure that our project will fit within the scope of those ARP funds. And, and that's what we want to make sure that we can do. And then there's options that we have to look at and make some determinations on reservoir siting. And, you know, we kind of said, hey, we've got this new property on Bishop Road, let's use that property. That may not be the best choice for us. You know, it was a, it was a great kind of holder place for the project. But now that we start to analyze costs of getting pipe out there and, and then the timing of when we need to spend these ARP funds, there may be choices that are more immediate, that we could get the, we can get the project done. So we're working in that avenue. And also, they may not be in the same location. You know, the well may be in one location because that's suitable for a well. And the reservoir will be in another location. And so we're doing all of that. We're trying to be mindful to get this project done as inexpensive as we can and try not to impact rates if we can all, at all help it. So that's what we're looking to do. The other thing that we're doing is we're going to go out to bid on the emergency generation system for the million gallon reservoir. And then once we get an acceptable bid, then we'll come back to council for award. The engineering is done. Now, as council knows, we did a, we did a contract with our city engineer to go ahead and design that project and, and that, that's been complete and our cost estimate should put it within our budgetary constraints. So we should be able to fully fund that project within our current water improvement fund. So lots of that kind of stuff going on. We've just got lots of little cleanup projects that we're working on, system improvements that are, you know, five, $10,000 projects. So we're doing a lot of those in-house and trying to get those done. We're also working on a building plan for Public Works. If you've been to City Hall lately or the community center, you pretty much can see things stored in the hallways and on top of the desks and in the little cubbies and the mayor's office. You know, in my office, we have things stored. We really need to get something built out of Public Works. We did an analysis out there, a ground analysis, because the building size that we're thinking of putting, we want to make sure that the ground can support the weight of that building. And so as part of some of the other work we were doing, we did that analysis. And so we're looking for where can we, we kind of hypothetically said we could put a building here, we could put a building there. Now what we're doing is refining those to say, here's, here's where we can actually put buildings. And, and we're trying to get some costs associated with that. It, you know, what I think I'll probably end up doing is, you know, we'll come back with some costs associated with the building and some options to pay for it. I may come forward with some sort of an interim plan, you know, maybe a smaller building that we can just use for heated storage. We just don't have any storage in the city. And the problem with it is, is we have lots of things that we own that can't gather moisture. And we really have no place to put them. So we either, we can rent some storage or we can build some storage. I've kind of looked at the cost and honestly, it's probably cheaper for us to actually build a small heated storage unit somewhere. So, so we'll look at all those things and we'll come back. So the next meeting could be rather long if we've got everything prepared to go because there's a lot of subjects. And a lot of choices to be made, but any recommendations that we make to you, you know, we've kind of worked through all these things and we're trying to find the best location for longevity, cost, those types of things. So. So we're working on all that in-house and I feel good about it because we're really close to pulling the trigger on a lot of major projects. You know, within the next couple of months, we're going to be into construction probably of, of, you know, some, some pretty hefty public works projects. If you all have any questions, happy to answer those. I will also let you know that staffing's been a little light off and on because we had people that have been out sick. Most of them have not been out sick with COVID, but we just, you know, we're, we're just being extra cautious. So we're saying if you have any symptoms whatsoever, stay home. So you may see a lot of fluctuations in staff levels right now, and that's, that's just because how we're trying to approach everybody. We have had a couple of COVID cases in the city. Hopefully, knock on wood, so far, we minimize any spread within city operations. And we haven't really seen that. I think that's because we've had some good, good policies in place. I would suggest that our next meeting, if in fact we do, do the public works planning meeting, it's very technical in nature and there's a lot of discussion to occur. I'd suggest to council that we go ahead and do that, just strictly Zoom. It, you know, it's hard to talk for 15 or 20 minutes in a mask. And then it's kind of muffled. And I think, I think we could deliver clearer messages and answers if we just did that via Zoom. And so I'll, I'll leave that up to you to discuss. And then again, if you just have any questions, happy to answer those now.
Anybody have any questions? I mean, I'm, I'm reluctant to go back to strictly Zoom. Even though I understand the, the, the potential, you know, health ramifications of having people in the room together and everything, I think it, by, by doing that, we may potentially be sending a, a, a worrisome message to people if we were to jump strictly back to Zoom. I think at least giving people the option is, I mean, for, for lack of a better word, it's, it's a little bit of a light at the end of the tunnel for some people. But I, I mean, at the end of the day, we also need to consider the, the health and safety of, of city staff. So I'm, I'm kind of in the middle. I'm kind of torn. Anybody else have any insight on that?
I really hate wearing masks and that's why I chose to do Zoom tonight. I am a real proponent of choice. So I'm, I'm pretty well with you as far as the choice to do it.
Anybody else?
I'm fine. You know, if people are comfortable going, going down and being at the community center, that's fine. I feel like I've had a lot of exposure. And so I'm staying home because you just never know, you might. Several people that I've known that I was just within a couple, a day or two of being exposed and they got COVID. And, and so it's just kind of landing all around me randomly between whether it's coworkers or just in a personal life and to limit me being out and about too much.
I mean, I, I had actually planned to be at the community center tonight, but when I got back from Chad on Monday, I mean, I just, I immediately got sick. I thought I had COVID until I took a couple of tests that came back negative. Otherwise, I'd, I'd be sitting there tonight, but.
So could I make a suggestion, Mayor, for the, for the next meeting? If it would be okay with council, we could have, we could have our operating staff in the community center and we could have it open if a visitor wanted to come. And then if you would be okay with myself and our public work staff and our consultant zooming in, so that we can have these lengthy back and forth conversations, I think that kind of maybe fits the bill.
Yeah. I, I think that, 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 that means the attentive of having clearer conversations and not having the mask on the entire time and trying to talk for 25 minutes with a mask on while also giving the, the community an option.
Okay, if you like that, that's the way we'll, we'll proceed if you're okay with it.
Yeah, as long as nobody has any objections, I'd, I'd say that's the best path forward.
I think that works. And I think it gives people who maybe don't have the ability of technology or Zoom to be able to participate too. And to me, that's the biggest thing, you know. We've had some pretty lengthy discussions. We've gotten some effective things done via Zoom. It's just the piece of, I don't want people to feel like they're being shut out of the process if they don't have access to a phone or computer. So I think this is a really good solution.
Yeah. Okay, good. Excellent. Well, I think we'll be making lots of decisions in the, in the coming months and, and, you know, we'll put some direction to it. Get working on some of these problems. Feel good about it. A little side note, just since we're at the council meeting and, and we didn't have this at the official council meeting, we did receive a, a just under $23,000 grant from T-Mobile Corporation. They have grants that they give out every year to communities. They do, I think, 25 communities across the United States. And we were one of those recipients. And actually had a great meeting with the T-Mobile folks. They've opened up a new outlet in state. and, um, actually had a great meeting with the T-Mobile folks. They've opened up a new outlet in Staten. They want to be part of our community. They've already pledged to be supporters of community events. And I, I thought it was just a great partnership and they were really impressed. They said it was a very easy decision uh, based on the project that we have out at Quarter Boone with the Mods Village uh, concept and what we're trying to do out there with our, our Saturday market. Uh, it fit right in with the objectives of their grant. And so I thought that was, um, you know, kind of a great tribute, uh, not only to staff that wrote the grant, um, but also to the project itself. Uh, and kind of our vision or ideas for that. Uh, Elena Turpin actually wrote the grant. Uh, she's my assistant. She's operating the equipment tonight. And, you know, that's kind of a personal win when you get these grants. We apply for grants all the time and, um, a lot of times, uh, we don't get them. You know, because we just don't have the resources to compete against, uh, cities that will have a whole department that do nothing but write grants. But occasionally we have time where we can write a few of these and we decided to look for grants this year that were kind of outside of the normal government grant cycle. And that's how we came across the T-Mobile grant. Uh, we continue to, we'll continue to do that because as you know, $20,000 is not a small amount of money to uh, a city like ours. And it really does help propel that project forward. And so I thought, uh, that, that was great. And then we also received a $6,000, uh, grant from, uh, uh, Pacific Corp. Uh, and, and also for that project. So, uh, we raised almost $30,000 in grants for that project this year. It was, it's good. It's good for us. So we'll keep doing that, um, you know, and, uh, we, we've actually, we've leveraged a lot of funds this year on behalf of the rest of the community. And, uh, we'd like to be able to do more of that.
Hey you guys.
Yeah. City staff have been doing a fantastic job with all that. Uh, I was really bummed that I didn't make it out to the little event we had on Thursday regarding that T-Mobile grant again. I don't know, I don't know what it was, but like I landed Monday and by Tuesday morning I was just like hacking chunks of my lungs up everywhere. It was brutal. But, um, no, I mean, it, it, every, every little bit counts. Um, I, I mean, what was, what was the original total price tag we had decided on for mods, Ron?
Well, we originally signed up for a $50,000 budget and in that budget we had about an $8,000 contingency because we were doing the project in-house ourselves. And we knew there would be some unforeseen costs. But if you remember right, um, that was about two years before COVID. And, um, and then, uh, we had to go through a process to get a release from, uh, some, uh, the federal
Yeah.
Department of Parks, uh, service because of some of the previous grant restrictions that we had. And so here we were building it in the middle of COVID. Well, the cost of everything because of the broken supply chain really dramatically increased. But I still think we're not going to be too far, um, off the budget, off the original budget. I think, I think we're probably closer to 65,000 into the cost of the build, which was, which is where we are now is what we budgeted for the 50,000. What the T-Mobile and Pacific Corp grant will help us do is it'll help us add power and lights to the building. Uh, the RV connections, some landscaping. Uh, the RV connections will be a plugin for food trucks, just like we put out at, uh, Milk Creek. And so it, it really helps us get that to the next stage of our vision. Um, uh, but I think staff's done a great job with that project. If you've seen it, it's painted now. That they've got to do some more painting out there as soon as weather permits, but
Yep.
It's, it's almost ready for, for their final, uh, inspection as far as the construction and the framing and stuff goes.
It, I mean, it's definitely looking good. I drove by it today and, uh, what I think our, our next big event is probably Christmas in the park. So it'll be exciting to finally utilize that building once it's complete. All right, moving on. Do you have anything else, Ron?
I don't think so.
Okay. Uh, mayor council reports. Anybody got anything? All right. I think the, uh, go, go ahead.
So, uh, I'm going to be activated on Title X orders to go assist with the refugee mission. I don't know how often I'm going to be able to be on here, but I'm going to try to be on here as much as possible. And I don't know how long my order is going to be.
Is this going down to the, to the, to the border, Scott?
No, that was canceled. It's the refugee mission now.
Where's that at?
Indiana.
Okay. So I mean, you're, you're still staying there. So you'll have, you'll have
Yeah.
hopefully, you know, decent connectivity.
Yeah, I should build a 10, but if mission dictates, I may not build a 10 meetings.
Yeah, yeah. What, what's the start date for that?
Uh, the 10th.
Okay. And I imagine they probably don't even have an end date on it yet. They're probably cutting like 180 or something like that.
I have no idea. I just found out about this yesterday.
Okay, okay. No worries.
I can send out an email and get more information as I get it, but as of now, I'll let you guys know.
Yeah. I mean, it, it doesn't sound like something that's going to be, you know, too terribly crazy. Uh, not, I mean, no, nothing worse than what I have to put, I can put up with on a regular basis. So I, I think we're going to be good. Uh, so I, I don't, I don't see that being a problem. Um, just, yeah, keep us, keep us in the loop. Um, I, I lost where my head was at. Oh, very important thing today. Very, very important thing. It is, uh, Doug's birthday.
Happy birthday, Doug.
To you. It was, uh, it was demanded by, uh, Mr. Ecclestone's better half that we do everything possible to embarrass him. And, uh, the, the best way to do that would probably be to sing happy birthday on the public record while he turns a shade of, uh, probably close to pomegranate that, uh, none of us have ever seen before.
There's the birthday, it's the lighting in here.
It's always just lighting, it's just lighting.
It's the lighting.
All right, we, we could skip singing it if it's, if it's just the lighting. But, uh, anyways, yeah.
Although I think everybody would love to hear your angelic voice.
I think we all know it's not angelic. But, uh, no, hap- happy birthday to, uh, to counselor Ecclestone there. Um, wanted to put that out there. So, uh, I know we had all kind of discussed my schedule previously. I was supposed to go into Ethiopia for two months. Uh, that has actually been canceled. So I should be home for, uh, at least the month of October. There is potential that I will be gone the end of October, going to Morocco for a week or two. Um, but other than that, as it stands right now, uh, October is, is, there's potential that I may be gone. Um, but other than that, I will be home until at least January. So, um, it was, it was unfortunate while I was in Chad, the internet was just so awful that I, I, there was no way I was going to be able to call into the meeting. Um, but I shouldn't be, shouldn't be missing anything anytime soon. But as always, I will, I will keep the council apprised of all that. Um, and then lastly, uh, I talked to, uh, Representative, uh, More Green, uh, Raquel. Uh, I'm sure quite a few people have been, uh, keeping in touch with, uh, what's going on with all the redistricting. It sounds like we will be moving to House District 17 out of 19 and into 17. Um, that does not happen until I believe January of 2023. So, uh, Raquel has assured me that she's still going to stay as involved in the community as she always has, you know, up, up until that point. Um, I believe come 2023, that, that seat for House District 17 is, is going to be vacant. So they will be appointing someone to fill it. Uh, and then there will be an election afterwards, depending on what, whatever term length is left on that seat, but it looks like we will be shifting over to House District 17. Um, good of the order. Anybody got anything? Well, no correspondence, no executive sessions. So if there is nothing else, we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting. I have 7:40.